Good evening and welcome to the weekly for City Division meeting. And, uh, you will try to make your- Cell phone if you'll please check to make sure it's on silence so we don't interrupt anyone. Appreciate it. Thank you. Tonight we're gonna start with a couple of recognitions, and the first recognition is to, uh, recognize the week of the young child. Is there a person or a group of people here to make a presentation? Please come forward, state your name, and tell us a little bit about your organization.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Anna Jenny, Executive Director of Douglas County Child Development Association, and I would like to thank you on behalf of the young children of Douglas County and the parents and teachers who care for them. This weekend, children's artwork will appear on storefronts all over downtown. Fifteen early learning programs and sixteen retailers are joining together to focus public attention on the needs of young children and their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and the services that meet their needs. As you enjoy the spring weather along Mass Street, you will have the opportunity to enjoy the creativity of the young children. As you enjoy the artwork, I hope we will see beyond the bright colors and the cute pictures to our future. There's been much talk recently at the state and local level about economic development, but economic development is more than the right tax policy, tall buildings, and designated business districts. Our future economic viability is in our children, the creativity we inspire, the friendship skills we teach, and the talents and confidence we encourage. We must make prudent investments of time and money in our young children to ensure our future and make this a livable community. And now, to represent the young children of Douglas County in accepting the Mayor's proclamation is Braylon Ramsey and Mason Ramsey, son and daughter of Marcy and Bra- Brian Ramsey.
Agree. Hi, guys.
Brad. You wanna go up there?
I-
Post seat a minute?
I'm not that scary. I'm gonna read the proclamation for you, okay? Alright?
I can read it to you.
Okay, "Whereas the Douglas County Child Development Association and many other organizations that provide early childhood care and education and support services to families with young children in conjunction with the National Association for Education of Young Children are celebrating the week of the young child, April fourteenth through April twentieth, two thousand thirteen. And whereas these organizations and many others are working to improve early learning opportunities which are crucial to the growth and development of young children and to building better futures for everyone in Lawrence, Kansas. And whereas all young children and their fami- families across the country and in Lawrence, Kansas deserve access to high-quality early education and care. And whereas in recognizing and supporting the people, programs, and policies that are committed to high-quality early childhood education as the right choice for kids, now therefore I, Robert J. Schum, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, to hereby proclaim the week of April fourteenth through twentieth, two thousand thirteen, to be the week of the young child in Lawrence, and encourage all citizens to work to make a good investment in early childhood." Very good. Can you guys carry that to the others?
Good job.
Don't get any better than that. I think they like it up here. Really good. Our team. Thank you all for being here and sharing this with us.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, I would like to proclaim, uh, April two thousand thirteen as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. Is there anyone here to represent that organization?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Not that we have to, but we can't top that.
That's a, that's, that's a hard show to work through.
Mr. Mayor, Commission members, staff, and visitors. My name is Roger Lemons. I'm here with others that are here behind me representing more than fifty active members of the Lawrence Parkinson Support Group. Our group involves both caregivers and Parkinson patients, both. We have been here in April for several years now, and we once again want to thank you for this opportunity to provide some information about Parkinson's disease. April is International Parkinson's Awareness Month, a time to recognize the need for more research in the journey to find a cure for this debilitating and progressive disease. Nearly one and a half million people in the United States have Parkinson's. Due to the often slow progression of the disease, the time between onset and diagnosis is usually between two and five years. It is estimated that for every person diagnosed with Parkinson's at least two more have it but have not yet been diagnosed. There are several symptoms of Parkinson's, of which the more common include tremor, rigidity, and slowness of movement, poor balance, shuffling or rapid steps, loss of facial expression, small cramped handwriting, softness of voice, and loss of the sense of smell. Most people with Parkinson's don't have all of these symptoms. In fact, thirty percent do not tremor. A side note here, I wish I fell on that thirty percent, but I don't. The Lawrence Parkinson Support Group meets on the third Tuesday of each month at 2:00 PM at the First Presbyterian Church at twenty-four fifteen Clinton Parkway. We are affiliated with the Parkinson's Foundation of the Heartland in Overland Park and the National Parkinson's Foundation in Miami, Florida. We distribute educational literature, hear speakers from the medical and healthcare community, and learn about the latest research and new drug trials, including those taking place at the KU Med Center in Kansas City. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday on the sixteenth of April. If you'd like more information about our group, you can call myself at eight four zero ninety-five ninety-four or Mary Jane Clements at eight six five twenty-four fifty. We wish to thank you for your support in helping to raise awareness in the journey to find a cure for the dreaded disease. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission members.
Thanks for being here. I'd like to read the proclamation at this time.
Alright.
"Now, whereas Parkinson's disease is a degenerative brain order that affects a million and a half adults in the United States, with over fourteen thousand people diagnosed with Parkinson's in the state of Kansas alone. And whereas more individuals suffer from Parkinson's disease than multiple sclerosis, muscular dystrophy, and Lou Gehrig's disease combined. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease include tremor, rigidity, slowness of motion, and difficulty with balance and speech. The causes of Parkinson's disease, though not yet known, are under intense study. The neurological department at the University of Kansas Medical Center has been designated by the National Parkinson's Foundation as the center of excellence in conducting ongoing research to improve treatment and to discover a cure. And whereas April eleventh has been proclaimed World Parkinson's Day, a day for all to recognize the need for more research and assistance in dealing with the devastating effects of Parkinson's disease. And now therefore I, Robert J. Schum, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, to hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand thirteen as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Lawrence, and urge all citizens to extend their support for those struggling with Parkinson's disease and the loved ones trying to help fight the battle." So, it's my pleasure to sign this and present to you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and all matters listed below on the Consent Agenda are considered under one motion will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. With that in mind, I'm going to remove item nine B and continue that until a later date. There's an individual who wants to make more information available to us. Are there any other items on the Consent Agenda any member of the Commission wishes to remove? Any item the public wishes to remove from the Consent Agenda for separate discussion and vote? Okay, with the exclusion of nine B, I will add to that the paying the payroll in the amount of one million eight hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-four cents, as well as claims to vendors, one hundred and seventy claims in the amount of one million seven hundred twenty-three thousand one hundred two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Amix Cromwell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five zero. Okay. Next item is City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Commission. A few items in this week's report. As you know, we look forward to the end of the month because we hear from the State Department of Revenue in regards to our sales tax distribution. You see the results of the most recent-
Distribution reflecting sales mid-January to mid-February. It's a little bit down from last year. Of course, last year was a good up year, so we're up against a high bar, but that's, um, that's good. We did have good progress in the first quarter for thirteen, and we'll obviously continue to monitor this important revenue source. Got our Economic Development Progress Report online. Appreciate Megan Gilliland's work on that. Brett Crumcano and other staff members contributed along with assistance from the Chamber of Commerce in Douglas County. You see a report that reflects a lot of good work in regards to that important community and commission priority. Starting a couple of new transit services in our transit system. We're gonna do a student summer bus pass. It's always good to get those younger riders familiar with the transit system and what it can offer. Seems to be appropriate to really hit that hard in the summertime, so you see that, um, program coming out. And then also, you're familiar with budgeting for the Nightline Bus Service. Bob is excited about getting this program out. Also, MB Transportation, our vendor that services the buses and employs the bus riders. This is kinda in their sweet spot of familiarities for some of the services that they can provide as well, so we're excited to get that underway, and we'll be reporting on its success in coming months. Utility Department has been dealing with a taste and odor issue at the caul plant. That's the bad news. The good news is, is that the treatment, uh, that we have been providing appears to be reducing the problem, so that while we're detecting it as it comes in, as it's going out, we're not necessarily seeing a problem. We're obviously gonna continue to monitor that. It's an area of concern as we deal with, um, upcoming water treatment demands in the Utility Department, and as we continue to battle the impact of the drought. And one of the items that we're looking at, it's staff and Commission will be seeing in the next few weeks is we've revisited our water conservation plan. We have one in place. The Kansas Water Office requires us to have one, but we've gone back and revisited to see if there's any good ones. It's actually been a good exercise for us just to walk through and see what it would do if we had to go from watch stage to warning stage to emergency stage. So, that's another item as well that we've been working on in our Utility Department. Scott's Department has put together an annual report. Would encourage you to take a look at that. A lot of responsibilities in the Planning and Development Services Department, and a lot of good work in the, in last year, and a lot of good statistic and a lot of good narrative information. I'd take you to encourage you to take a look at that. Then finally, our energy efficiency efforts were highlighted in a case study that the City Managers Association put together, and you see a link to that, that report. Be happy to respond. Any questions or comments you have?
Are we seeing any taste odor in the Clinton plant yet?
Um, Dave Wagner's here. I mean, we've, I think we've had a few episodes where we've noticed it on the intake, but nothing that we think is likely to be felt by customers today.
Right, Mayor and Commissioners, we probably, since we have new instruments, we're able to detect it a lot more frequently than we used to be able to do, but we're detecting background levels continually, if not most of the time, but usually not to the stage that requires us to take extra steps in treatment. But the Clinton, the caul plant is definitely seeing a spike in geosmin, which is one of the taste and odor compounds. Clinton is relatively calm at this point in time so far, so, uh, not that we necessarily expect it to remain that way, but we're ready if it isn't, and, uh, but right now it seems it has not, not blown up like the caul intake has where we're seeing high levels.
Other questions?
Scott, on your report-
Thank you.
On your report, it talks about inspections performed with almost eight thousand. Did that include all inspections, not just inspections on, uh, housing stock, you know, that exists for rent right now, and anything like that? Contractor called in for inspection and told you just what-
The inspections that are, pressure amics that are near eight thousand were for, were related to our Building Safety Division, the building process, not rentalized, these inspection.
Good questions. Alright. Thank you very much. Now, we will proceed with the regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda is to consider the following items related to the Lawrence Public Library Edition renovation project. It has to do with a package of bids. Staff?
Mayor and Commissioners, so pursuant to you setting the bid date, we have received the bids for the library edition and renovation. Keep in mind that BA Green is our general contractor. They have set out a number of different bid packages. We competitively bid those packages. We've analyzed that. We are now ready to make a recommendation to you in the dollar amount that you see in the agenda. That is the base bid, and then six hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars in alternates. The good news is, is that the project continues to remain on budget. We still have a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency. I think that's good as we go into now the construction phase. We're obviously into the construction phase in regards to the parking garage. We'll now be getting into the construction phase on the library edition and renovation as well, so the project remains within budget and meeting all of the goals that the Commission and that the Library Board has sought. We're here this evening with a number of representatives of the, of the team, and on the first agenda item, and then Diane's gonna talk about the, uh, the artwork for the project as well. We'll be happy to respond to any questions that you might have about the project today.
Questions?
Hey Dave, um, the items that we added back in are items that, because we came in, bids came in a little lower than anticipated. These were items that were originally in the project. Now, there's still the seven hundred and fifty thousand contingency, but assuming things continue going down the road of coming in a little less than expected, the contingency money doesn't necessarily mean that we would add more things.
No.
Basically, we got it now to the point where it's what we initially proposed, and the additional savings would actually just mean it comes in under budget.
That, that is correct. Everybody here, Commissioner Cromwell's question, I think that is correct, that, um, I mean, this, this is the bid. Now, there will be change orders. In any project you get in and you find out that, um, it's not working the way it was designed, I'm not gonna say that too loud, because we've got a great architect team that's here as well, or it's not working the way that we had envisioned.
Sure.
It's designed appropriately, it's being executed appropriately, but we don't think it's gonna work from an operational standpoint. That's true for the garage, it's also true for the library. Obviously, we've spent a lot of time trying to minimize those issues, but, um, it's always good to have a contingency because you'll, you'll find something in there that, that won't work according to the bid. We might have a subcontractor not perform, and Dennis or Tracy come in and say, "This isn't working, we're not gonna proceed with that subcontractor," and we'll have to go to the next highest subcontractor, for example. So, it's, it's good to have a contingency, but that's at least the way I would look at it, and let the people that are actually doing the work correct comments. Is that satisfactory?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions?
Dave, along with Commissioner Carter's questions there, assume for a minute that there were made to contingency balance, it's unused. Would we use that then to reduce debt, or would we use that? How would that money be used?
I would suggest it be to, uh, to reduce debt on the project.
My comment, Commissioner, on any project is we don't have to spend up to the budget amount. It's not a contest. It's, it's a desire to get the project in within budget and, um, and use that accordingly. You all would then decide what we would wanna do with that, whether or not we would pay down debt, whether we would look at other. There's some, some items in the alternates that we didn't approve. There was a bulb out at Seventh and Vermont that we did not approve, just because it was something that we didn't have to have, but it would've been nice as part of our, part of our improvements as we would look at the street. We're gonna try and do that maybe when we do some of the street work after the, uh, the library is finished. One of the things I've asked Chuck and Mark Teal is, is that when we get to the point of opening up the facility, hopefully this time next year, maybe a little bit later, we take a look at whether or not we need to do some street work there. Usually after a major construction project, you gotta pay attention to street work. Not suggesting we would use the, the debt proceeds for that, but there may be something along those lines. You all will, will decide how we're gonna spend any of that additional money.
With the adding the coffee bar back in, is it envisioned that this is going to, an RFP's gonna be put out, and this is gonna be privately operated?
I'd turn to, Sherry, you wanna respond? Do you mind responding to that? Sherry turns to the Assistant Library Director, and can, I think Brad's not available to be here this evening, but I think you could talk a little bit about their process, if you wanna-
Yeah, that's, that's what we plan to do, is an RFP for that to be run by a, a local vendor.
Okay. Sherry, will you state your full name, please?
Sherry Turner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
I just have a question on one of the bids, the glazing for the walls. Only one bid submitted that was only temporary, I saw. Can you explain maybe why that, only one bidder?
I'm Dennis Rogers with BA Green. I talked with the, the two other glazers in town that typically bid on these, which is Advanced Glass and Midwest Glazing, and Midwest said he had an issue with getting a vendor who had actually bid on it. It was kinda geared around a product by EFCO, and he could not, um, get pricing from that, or, he was, he was not a dealer of that product. And then Advanced Glass, they just decided it was too complex for their normal scope of work. This is not a, a normal glazing system on it, it's a veneer system which relies on the structural steel system to support it. It's also structural glazed where you don't have exposed aluminum, so a lot of guys shy away from that. So, that's the best explanation I can give. Kansas City guys tend to not go this direction because they have a hard time being competitive over here, and then a lot of the Tepica glazers just don't come to Lawrence, so.
Other questions?
Along those lines, thank you.
...the actual bids-
Sure.
...today. When you look at the bid list, is that everyone that bid on each of the items, or are those just finalists, or?
Those were everyone who bid on each package.
So, and, and I see we've got a number of Lawrence companies, but for instance, painting.
Correct.
Nobody in Lawrence bid to paint?
It's, it's a big painting job. You know, it's two hundred thousand dollar painting job, um, but-
It's not from lack of awareness?
It's, yeah, I mean, we've invited people a lot of times on, you know, painting projects or, or painting scopes, you'll, you'll get a lot more bids. This one had a lot of things going on, has a lot of onsite finished woodwork and things like that. I mean, we have twenty thousand board feet or square feet of wood panels on the thing. It just takes somebody with some horsepower to be able to handle it.
Sure. Well, I was paying special attention to the Lawrence companies that got contracts, and boy, you'd love to see more of them. If you look, given the number of Lawrence companies that actually bid, turned out pretty well, but I was just surprised that in some areas we didn't actually have companies here that bid on it, so thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
My, my experience on that is there is a real relationship between the size of the company and the size of the project, and smaller companies can do smaller projects, and bigger companies-
Correct.
-can take on bigger, and it's just the way it works out in the construction industry. But, uh, and then there's, I noticed some, there's some vendors, there's some trades we don't offer here, like Firespancling.
That's correct.
The company in Pleasanton, which I've used before, is a very good company, and they evidently won the bid, so some of the crafts just aren't available in Lawrence.
Right.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Any public comment on this item?
Good eve- excuse me, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's KT Walsh. I was wondering if there's any way to give preference to local vendors should there be an RFP for a coffee shop in the library? It would seem smart to keep the money circulating in Lawrence. Thank you.
If I could respond, the, I would see that was within the purview of the Board of Trustees for the, for the library. It's an operational issue for the library. You could ask that the Board give preference or entertain that comments from KT or others, but it wouldn't be something that we would typically decide as far as an operational issue within the library.
Other public comments? Alright, back to the City Commission for discussion or a motion. Well, I think we oughta move forward a little.
We've gotten this far. I don't see why not.
You'd pay to turn back now.
I, all the hours I think I spent on it, I'd break down right here.
I suppose I, I would just add, I, you know, as far as local vendors go, it would be a preference, and I think probably the Board of Trustees, I assume that the preference would be to work with someone locally. Wouldn't micromanage that, insist on anything, or even try to, but I'd certainly like to see that we try and do, do that here locally.
I think that would be a great idea.
Other comments?
Would just appreciate two, two, uh, local Lawrence vendors, and that's Gould Evans and BA Green. Uh, you know, the two biggest vendors we always have to remember that we have on this project are, are Lawrence folks, and are much appreciated for their, for their great work on this, and putting this together is a lot of work, and I really have nothing but respect for it, so thank you very much for it.
So, Aaron, would you like to accept the bids in total amount of nine million seven hundred nine thousand five hundred and five dollars with a beginning motion?
Yes, I would. So moved.
Moved?
Thank you.
Second, Cromwell, Amix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries five zero. Okay, now we're gonna talk about a little art for the project.
As Diane gets ready to talk about that, I did hear a majority of the Commissioners indicate that they'd like to let Brad and Sherry know that there's interest in the Board of Trustees looking at local preference for the coffee vendor?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. You may recall last fall, you received a recommendation from the Public Art Selection Committee related to the Public Art for the Library Project, and this evening Grace Peterson is here. Grace served as the Chair of that, of that group, and she may wanna miss, make some comments later on this item as well. But, um, the, the group went through a total of seventy-one proposals originally, and forward that recommendation to you, that the team of Derek Van Keppel and John Shreve be, be selected for that art with Rock Cottage Glass Works. And since that time in November, the committee has been working and staff has been working with the, with the artists. And also, I'd like to recognize Sean and Steve with Gould Evans, who worked closely with both the committee and also with the artists on the project since that point. So, the, the original proposal has been refined, and what we're bringing to you this evening is an agreement with the artists to, to complete the project. They would be designing and installing the artwork, and there's several things that I just wanted to highlight for you with regard to the, to the art. I think one of the main reasons the committee was interested in, in this particular team of artists is not only their beautiful art and their great track record with, with projects of this size, but also the fact that they had proposed placing the artwork and integrating it into various aspects of the library project. So, this first slide that's up in front of you is a little hard to read, but it, it does show the locations of several elements in- show the locations of several elements in the project. One is to be art glass, which is their medium, to be installed in the ceiling and backlit in this lobby area. And then also a sign that will also be, has been designed by Gould Evans as part of the project, and the library sign will have integrated with it the glass that the artists will bring to the project. A couple of other facets, and this is the slide that shows what that sign would look like in this white area here would actually be the glass. The other, the major element of the project would be a very large 25-foot atrium sculpture, which is in the atrium area of the library. So this is a two-story area. And this is a rendering of this glass and metal sculpture that would be in the atrium. This would also be very reflective in terms of light. This is the view from the bottom area. And then this is the view from the top floor of that same sculpture. The other elements that are in the project relate to the children's room area. The artists will provide some glass discs that will be able to be placed in an area that is selected by the library staff to designate some of the reading cubby areas that will be in the children's area. And additionally, one of the neat ideas I think that came out of the project was to create some of these discs that would be used for a children's treasure hunt that would be able to introduce children to various areas of the library using the art, which I think is a neat feature and will be really nice. Since the meeting, as I mentioned, in the discussion in November, the team of the artists have also visited extensively with Gould Evans on the project and coordinated it into the design of the building, as you approved here this evening. And that has been done within the budget that's established for the artwork. The artwork budget was $75,000, so it will not create any additional costs on the construction side for the project. So this enables the budget to be maximized really for the art, which was, I think, the hope of the committee. So the item before you this evening would be to authorize the city manager to approve the contract with Rock Cottage Glass Works for them to create and install this art. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this item? Please. State your name, please.
Grace Peterson. I'm a member of the Cultural Arts Commission and the Chair of the Present for Committee. And I just wanted to thank the Commission for designating this money to go towards art. It's an important aspect of this building. And especially Gould Evans for working with the artists and integrating. I think the word integrate is really important on this project because it wanted it to not just be something that was plopped there for art's sake, but to really have this be, you know, a holistic approach and coming at it from all these different sides. And I think it's going to be beautiful, and I'm really excited to see the models, so. Anyway, thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Back to the City Commission for discussion? I like it.
I think it's beautiful. It's going to be great.
Motion. What else?
You know, the agreement back to this, appreciate all the steps down, everyone else involved, so thanks for our time and people's input.
It does look like it's going to fit very, very nicely into the whole interior. That's what's cool about it is that it's going to be, it's going to have a real good feel for it. And we're excited to see it in place. Other comments? Motion?
Aaron moved to authorize city manager to execute the contract with Rock Cottage Glass Works for the design installation of artwork for the library project in the amount of $75,000.
Moved Carter. Second Cromwell. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries five zero. Next on the agenda would be public comment. Anybody from the public wish to make a comment at this time? There's, we have Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dennis Brown, President of the Lawrence Preservation Alliance, the new owner of the Lawrence Turnhalla, the German-American Community Center, built by the Lawrence Turnverine in 1869 at the corner of Ninth and Rhode Island. We're getting ready to have two open houses for the public. Commissioners, staff, you're all invited, the entire community's invited, this Saturday morning from 10:00 to 12:00, and the following Sunday, April 21st, from 2:00 to 4:00. And this will be the last time the Turnhalla will be open to the public, at least through the summer, possibly beyond. There'll be short presentations at each program. Dr. Dennis Domer of Kansas University, the University of Kansas, and Frank Barron, the Director of the Max Cottis Center at the University of Kansas, will both speak briefly about the significance of this structure and the significance of the German immigration to the Midwest and the founding and early growth of Lawrence and Douglas County. LPA bought the Turnhalla last September 25th in an effort to get this historic structure turned around. We saw it as our civic duty. We're throwing everything we have at it. We're hoping the community will understand this is our chance to save the Turnhalla while LPA owns this structure. We can't own it forever. We have a certain window that LPA has opened for the community. Not tomorrow, today is the time to save the Turnhalla. We're working hard, we're raising funds. We know way more about this structure than we knew when we first started. We're anxious to share our knowledge of this with the community. But another thing we're hoping for in these open houses is that the community will share their knowledge with us. We would love to see photos that the community may have from around 1900, where the dates could be verified. Maybe there's a wedding or a reception tied to a date that the family actually can say, okay, this was 1901 or whatever. We know there was a door on the south wall of the building. It's not there anymore. We've never seen a picture of the door. We believe the basement windows where Free State Glass is right now on the Ninth Street north side of the building were a change in the building at some point. We'd like to know about when those windows were installed. There's other things that we think the community can share with us at these open houses that will greatly aid in our understanding of this building. So we think it's going to be a great time. We hope to see you all there. We're really looking forward to it. And that's about it. While I'm here, though, I don't anticipate being here next week, Commissioners Cromwell and Carter, we really appreciate working with you these last few years. We've really felt like you've listened to us. We've had a legitimate seat at the table. That's all we ask, and we really appreciate it. Good luck to you both. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
My name's KT Walsh, and Dennis just said what I wanted to say, which was thank you so much, Commissioners, for your service, and most especially for the work you did to bring us into, to bring recycling forward for our city. And you, Commissioner, for making it a much more senior-friendly city, so thank you.
Thanks, KT.
Other public comments? All right, thank you all for your comments. Future agenda items?
Mayor Commissioners, we understand from the county election officer that they will certify the votes on Thursday. We will then conduct the swearing-in next week, and you see that we basically have that as the agenda item next week.
Is the site plan going to be part of the sitting city commissioner or is it going to be the next city commissioner?
Mayor, I think unless you direct otherwise, I think we'll do it as we've traditionally done, have the existing commission approve the consent agenda, not putting anything on there that we know of any controversy or matter, and then go into the comments from the departing commissioners, swearing-in of the new commission, mayor, vice mayor selection and so forth.
So the site plan will be?
Yes.
On the consent agenda?
Don't see any reason why we couldn't do it that way unless you tell me otherwise.
No, that's what I'd like to see happen. It's like kind of a light future agenda there.
If that was a question, my only comment would be, we're getting ready for budget season, so it's going to be busy.
All right. Thought we had a couple months off, so. Any questions or comments on the calendar, I mean, on the future agenda items? Okay, next on the, next on the agenda is the commission items. I think we have one item here tonight. Mr. Cromwell?
Yeah, remember how KT and Dennis just said we worked hard? I think that it's something that we don't like to bring up, our salary and the amount that the city commissioners are paid, because obviously it's a self-serving sort of thing to do. It seems sometimes it can seem, you know, a little inappropriate when we have so many needs from the community. We don't want to make this a job that someone does for the money. But as I'm leaving, I guess I was taking, and I was thinking about how, you know, this didn't present obviously a financial burden to me, unlike it does to the commissioners here, but it could to someone else who was potentially coming on in the future. And I mean, I looked back at some of the expenses, you know, we're, city commissioners are paid $9,000 a year, and they get an extra $1,000 for the year that they're mayor. But there's no, you know, there's no resources, there are plenty of city resources, you hear the city manager cringing over there, that are offered to the city commissioners, but there's a lot that aren't. And among those that a lot of people don't maybe think about right away is transportation. You're driving all over town all the time. There's no reimbursement that's typical for that that we get. Cell phones, computers, wardrobe, it sounds petty, but it is required and could present a hardship for someone. You know, I would estimate, you know, we're talking about thousands of dollars a year to be a commissioner. And you already talked about the amount of work for the money and how difficult that is. Frankly, I think that the salary of a city commissioner ought to cover our expenses and enough for a babysitter to watch your kids while we're at the meetings. And it's not that way currently, and I think that that is a problem that needs to be dealt with, and it's somewhat unpleasant for us to talk about a lot of times, but I think we need to. And if, maybe if we frame it in this manner, maybe if we talk about having the pay raise going to effect at a later date, and there may be some ways that we can get around some of the sort of unpleasantness of it to allow this to be accomplished. I think that we need to have this discussion, and that's why I'd like to start that off.
Yeah, well, Aaron told us you might be talking about this, and, you know, we as commissioners feel differently about the amount of time it takes to serve the community. And, you know, this is not, we don't do it for the money, but I also agree with you that I think the amount of time that's required and the pay that's associated with that time is not really commensurate with the level of effort. It need not be a charity operation. And I think that in studying what other communities of similar size and smaller size do, what the county commission of Douglas County and other counties have done, I think it's clear that, you know, we haven't really touched this issue since, what is it, when we decided, 1999. So it's been 14 years since there's been any change in pay for commissioners. And, you know, at $9,000, I think, I think that's going to be a barrier or a burden to some people who would otherwise be able to serve. So in light of that, I think I would agree that at some point in time, we need to discuss or actively create a timeline where we talk about this as a commission and maybe take a look at some of the average costs of what it costs, you know, the amount of time it takes to be a commissioner, and try to figure out a fair rate of pay that's commensurate with the work that's put in and the cost of being a commissioner. I think those are great points. I mean, many communities have stipends for their commissioners for cell phone, for internet access, which is really required for the delivery of a lot of our materials. You know, those are costs that are otherwise carried or, you know, is utilized, but, you know, I publish my cell phone number in the paper and get plenty of calls on that and spend many hours talking to people on the phone. And I think, you know, those are things that need to be realized, and some people may not be able to afford or don't care to use. So I think there's a real discussion that needs to be had, and I appreciate you bringing it up because to be a city commissioner is a, you know, minimum of a 20-hour-a-week job, and I think when you're mayor, it's at least 40 hours a week. I know Bob could probably say it's probably more. But realistically, I think if we were to look at what the average cost of, or excuse me, what the average wage for a city commissioner is in other communities, really look at the amount of time that's spent on service to the community, and then come up with a reasonable cost or rate that would cover all the expenses, I think that's something we need to talk about. I had talked to the county commissioner, or to the county, about the county commissioners' wages and salary and tried to get an understanding of the history there. You know, it's a lot more than we make here. And I think that the, at minimum, it's an equal amount of time spent on these services. And I believe that the citizens of Lawrence deserve to elect people who can spend the time it takes to do this job and not close it off to people who can't afford to do this. And I think it's really important that we address this. So I would say, you know, some of the research I did is some cities have a citizen board that looks at wages for elected officials annually, decides what it should be, sets that wage and moves forward, or it's something that I think as commissioners, we, as long as it's, you know, a reasonable annual approach, that we sit down and talk about whether or not there needs to be any cost of living changes. But I think if we benchmark it to the average wage in Douglas County, you know, and maybe come up with a percentage based on that, or, you know, not arbitrarily pick a number based on what we believe, but I think we should study it and come up with a number that I think the citizens of Lawrence can support and that we as commissioners can support. I think it's something that needs to be done. It's well overdue. After 13 years of no change, I think it's time to sit down, and that would be 14 years this year. So I'm completely in favor of studying this.
Yeah. We've had this discussion once before, many years ago when I was on commission, and what I believe is fair is you don't want it to be, you don't want the wage or the salary to be a barrier to entry by anyone. So in that, by that I mean, people, not everyone can get off work to be a city commissioner, so if they're required to take off work, then they don't get paid. And so then is the salary you receive here for the time you spend, is it equal to what you lose at work? And then you've got other expenses. If you've got childcare, if you've got other obligations that you have to have a substitute for in order to be a city commissioner. So I think that's the first point I'd like to make, is that it should not be a barrier to entry to any citizen who wants to run for an elected office. Secondly, whoever, I think it was you, Mike, that said, and I could say this because I'm not going to be mayor after next week, the mayor's position, and I've deeply enjoyed doing it, and I've had the time to do it, and I've done, I've gone to each and every meeting I possibly could, but it is a tremendous amount of time that you put in. So the difference, the differential between a commissioner's salary and a mayor's salary should be more than $1,000 a year, or 10% or 11%, however you want to figure it, just because of the disproportionate amount of things you're asked to do. And I think if you're... And I think if you're going to serve as mayor, you should do it. I mean, the community wants to be proud of their political body, and the mayor represents that, and they should be there for the different meetings and organizational accomplishments that every, many different groups of people accomplish in the city. So, from that, I just would throw that in there, too, that I think that the differential between the mayor's salary and the commissioner's salaries are, need to be looked at as well.
Mayor Parkett and Vice Mayor, I'll let my vote up for you. You're going to have the opportunity to put this on the agenda in future time. I think part of the history here goes without saying that I've been involved, at least as I look at the list that was put together here, I think in 1985, when we went from $20 to $40 increase in salary. So, and I think that was every two weeks. I was involved with that. But also during the time when I was county commissioner, that I actually made recommendation that we cut the salary, which you found out today.
I did.
Because I thought that we had cut the number of meetings that we had by a third, so I decided, hey, we can do without, you know, a third of the money. And I think some of the commissioners that I served with still have a hard time getting over that one. I think one of the, one of the things that is part of the process, though, that we need to remember, that what we've done in the past, and mayor, I don't, I can't remember at the time, but you guys, your commission discussed it, and I think that was in 1981 or about that time. Generally, it's discussed as a part of, you know, what an incoming commission might receive as compensation. The outgoing commission might consider something like that. So, if we're going to do that, I hope that, you know, we take into consideration that, you know, I have a hard time, you know, raising my salary on anything, but, you know, one of the things that I agree with, some of the things that you said about it should not be a barrier to having good people serve, but at the same time, too, we need to be extremely careful and understand that, you know, we're not creating an amount of money that's going to have it as, heaven forbid I use this word, career, but, you know, we've got to be careful there. And then, and then there's.
Careful.
Yeah, that's right.
Someone was needing to be more careful.
That's right. That's right. You know, and another part.
I was thinking lifer.
That's right. Well, and that's why I hated to use that word. But anyway, there's another part of this, too, and I know that things that I've thought about in the past, too, is there comes the former government discussion, you know, about making sure that you don't cross that line of, you know, having full-time commissioners down here. We're still citizen commissioners. That is, you know, the charter that we operate under, so we need to be extremely careful about that. We hire a city manager, professional city manager and his staff to carry out, you know, the day-to-day affairs of the city, and he does an extremely good job with the staff. So, we need to be extremely careful of that. So, when we have that discussion, just to let you know, mayor, that's Vice Mayor, that's where I'll kind of be, too. Okay?
I wouldn't have anything to add. Everything Commissioner Amix just said there, I agree with, and I think from the sounds of things, I don't think we're heading in the direction of risking having somebody making this their primary job or, you know, enticing people to run for the money. I trust it'll just be a good conversation that probably at least is overdue to be had if it's been 14 years. But I'd certainly echo everything that Mike said there as well. And, you know, from a staff standpoint, I think that's what you were getting at, is basically you don't want someone to come and park at the desk upstairs and start trying to run the city when we're not set up for that. Don't need that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I read an article today that talks about how the number of candidates, it's a study, the number of candidates that run for a position is proportional to the amount of money that is made by that commission. So, that they're trying to get more involvement in government, talking about changing the costs of, or the salaries of the government officials in a part-time position, that, you know, that there was a huge increase in, meaning, let's say, two or three more candidates per seat that would run when the fees were adjusted to a wage that was commensurate with the time required for that position. And so, I mean, I think there's some people that just cannot do it because of the reason Bob's mentioned. And I think to get more candidates, to get better candidates, and to get more diverse options in our community, I think that's something that I can't, I couldn't ignore because the study was pretty clear-cut, and they were trying to figure out how to get more people involved in government. And they studied those things. And I think those things have been out there, and, you know, there's places where, as Mike said, they're basically citizen governors, and they make 900 bucks a month, and, you know, like we do, and that's it. Or they make $900 a year, and that's it. It's not about the money. But those positions are also less sought after, and there's less eligible and/or interested candidates. So, I think, I think it's something that we need to at least consider, and, again, I like the idea of deferring it down the road, but we can't go too far down the road because there's always going to be somebody seated who's going to be on the commission that's affected by that. And that's probably one of the reasons why it never happens. It's going to be you. So, you know, we could kick the can down the road if you want, Aaron, a little bit, but we.
You would never do that. I learned that.
No, no, I don't want to do this. So, anyway, that's.
Well, you know, I've heard a lot of wild comments during elections over the years in Lawrence. I've never heard anybody say, I'm running for the money. So, you know, there's, obviously, right now, it's not a money issue in terms of overly generous amount, but like I said before, I do think that it ought to be looked at in terms of allowing anyone who wants to run to have an amount of money that's commensurate with what the market is, so that they're not taking a financial hit, or they can't run because they feel like they'll take a financial hit. So, I would be in favor of seeing this on a later agenda. It ought to be something we look at pretty quickly, since we don't have a lot of things coming up here in the next few weeks. It might be time to just delve into that and see where the new commission goes with it. So, I appreciate, Aaron, you bringing it up, and.
It would be really hard to be, you know, a, I have flexibility, we've all got flexibility to, sitting up here to do this job, but it would be very difficult, like, you know, I think a school teacher or someone with a traditional job to do this. Frankly, I, you know, you'd most likely need to take a leave of absence in order to do it. To do this job effectively, yeah, you'd have to take a leave of absence. We need to make that affordable for folks.
Any other comments? Public comments? Okay. It'll show up on our future agenda in a few weeks, it sounds like. All right. Calendar. Meeting Friday morning for the Joint Economic Council. City commission room right here. Groundbreaking for Rock Chalk Park for the Tuesday morning at 9:00 AM. That's with KU's portion of that. Sad note, April 30th, we've canceled the meeting. Joe, never mind. Okay. Any other calendar items? Just check the ribbon cuttings.
No, I was just saying, maybe Aaron moved to adjourn, and that'll be our last act here.
You could jump in together.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Side entertainment motion at this time to adjourn.
So may.
Second.
Cromwell, Carter. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Over.